And hope that they get feeling better. And then we'll hear more from our Parks District. Um, when uh, the schedule permits and everybody's feeling good about that. So moving right along. The next section of our meeting is where we allow an opportunity for the public to address the commission. If you would like to do so, please begin by stating your name and residential address. We do have a three-minute uh guideline today. Um, our schedule just got a little more flexibility to it. So we'll, we'll share that flexibility with folks. Um, but if under those terms and conditions, um, is there anyone who would like to address the commission at this time? Oh, come on, man, not you.
Yeah, I didn't really talk last week.
Nah, nah.
You had six minutes today.
I'm not gonna talk for six minutes. Okay, um, Cherry timer thirty-four, six-four South Angkor. Um, I'm gonna give you these, these are, it's, this is an article which it's been in the news somewhat lately. Um, it's a Nobel Peace Prize winner, Dr. John Klausser, talking about climate change, global warming, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, um, he's being discredited by some kind of like the whole COVID thing. And now we're finding out a lot of that was not what it was cracked up to be. So I'm gonna give you this instead of reading it. And then on another note, um, I'm gonna read you just a little blurb here. Um, about two of the largest landowners in the state of Ohio. One is a timber company, it's, it's Escanaba. Uh, they own, I don't know, a couple hundred thousand acres or so. Um, but the second largest landowner in Ohio is Bill Gates. He owns nine thousand acres. And over six thousand of that, as we know, is slated for a solar project in Madison County. That will, if it goes through, end up approximately thirteen thousand acres. Now, what troubles me is his quote. "I own less than one fourth thousandths of the farmland in the United States," Gates said in a Reddit Ask Me Anything session. "I have invested in these farms to make them more productive and create more jobs. There isn't some grand scheme involved. In fact, all these decisions are made by a professional investment team." He's putting it into solar. He's not putting it into farmland. He's not making farmland more productive. And then in the Wall Street today, he, along with multiple other billionaires, are investing in lithium. So it's all about the money. And I think we all need to sit back and realize that even in Fairfield County, it's all about the money when it comes to the solar fields. We need to realize that, and it's not going to create some big um energy savings. We have plenty of fuel with gas and nuclear, which is as, as green as solar is. So I think we need to be careful of what we wish for and just take stock in what's really happening and not just what you hear in the news.
Thank you. I hope you don't mind me teasing.
It's that?
Said, I hope you don't mind me teasing.
Okay, no, oh, no. No, I've got a, I've got a good sense of you.
You're good, right?
Yeah, we can dig at each other all day long.
Um, is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? We, we do appreciate folks joining us here, thank you. I wanna go off schedule a little bit. Let's go to Park, is that okay? Yeah, yeah. Um, Park, you've got some updates for us on uh budget and forecasting. I know you and I had a chance to touch base a little bit on some of those issues this morning. But uh, wanted you to share with the commissioners and everybody else what you've been up to on that.
Okay, yeah, we uh, we've done some research on sales tax and, and um, Dr. Brown just provided me some numbers and numbers that she provided actually a little bit higher than what I had saw on the website. So uh, things are looking even better um than what I saw for November. So for November actuals, year-over-year, um, my projections were showing us down about three percent. They're gonna be slightly higher than what that is there as far as it'll be less than three percent year-over-year variance. You can, those numbers are also off the work with. Uh, go back to the website and see what's been updated over the last twenty-four hours to see what that change may be. Um, I also looked at this to the date, so January through November, I compared twenty-two to twenty-three. And the numbers at the time were about four percent better than uh, than the previous year as well. Um, I then went and looked at what our current uh budget was and tried to forecast what I thought was going to happen for the rest of the year. And if we go by what the forecast was, um, I had about a million dollars, which would be the estimate for what December was. Uh, I do anticipate that being in higher, uh, coming in around, around two point two million dollars. So possibly overall about a one point two million dollar increase over our current budget right now, if my estimate is correct. And I don't know if you wanna talk about uh your numbers and if we're just talking about Dr. Brown at all?
Um, right now, we've exceeded the current estimate in sales tax about nine hundred and seventy-four thousand. I adjusted this morning the estimate by two and a half million because we'll get December as well. That brings it to sixty-three million in the aggregate for the general fund, which we will already be at a hundred percent. I'm not gonna go back and adjust the other smaller categories because we think that sweet spot, that sweet spot we've talked about is around that hundred five to hundred and ten percent. And I think it'll be around there, be around the, the smaller end of that, the lower end.
Right, so, and, and I'm not pressing you on this because it, whatever it is, it is, I mean, twenty-three is kind of, well, but what do you have a twenty-three, did your twenty-three number change today?
Yes.
And, and for sales tax, to what?
Increased by two and a half million. And then the aggregate, it went from, I think it was like sixty and a half million total general fund to sixty-three.
Okay, alright, so what, what is your, your twenty-three sales tax estimate now? I know you said it went up by two and a half million, but I apologize for not recalling the base.
Um, I'm gonna have to look because I don't think it's the same number that's up there. And I need to understand if that's like my estimate or another projection, so I'll have to look at that.
That's fine, that's fine, alright. So what, what else do you have, Park?
That's all I have for today.
And then you're currently feeling good about December five for the budget resolution?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Is, is there any one here who, for whatever reason, doesn't feel good about December five? So on scheduling issues, just to revisit those briefly, I'm gonna fly out on the eighth of December. And I don't have a return ticket yet.
You don't come back?
Twenty-four is gonna be a great year to.
It's up in the air, but if the fifth gets pushed to the twelfth, then I will definitely fly back late on the eleventh to not miss that. I don't wanna miss the budget resolution.
Okay.
But um,
I mean, probably, but.
I know you can't, it's not like that, it's just, us, us, you know, we're all supposed to do the job, so.
Steve?
Yes?
I think it's thirty point seven.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, thanks for checking into that.
Yeah, I'm just looking at a previous report, so I think it's thirty point seven.
For, for some reason, I don't wanna say it, because it, you know, but I don't know where I saw it or why I thought this, but I, I was thinking that the most recent estimate was like twenty-nine for sales tax.
It's came in a little bit more.
Yeah, no, that's great, that's a, that's a big number.
Yeah.
And then are you holding your, and it doesn't matter, it's, it is where it is, but are you holding the twenty-four estimate?
I think so.
Constant.
I think it'll be a little bit higher.
You think you're gonna face that?
Yep, I think so, based upon this last quarter.
So just while we're chatting on this, to kind of let you know what is happening on the budget issues. Certainly subject to change over the next couple of weeks or whatever. But the consumption number, usage rate is being alleviated for the 2024 resolution. So in other words, we're not going to deploy a ninety-four or a ninety-five or a ninety-six percent usage assumption for the budget. When we take that usage assumption out and based on the current um estimates for revenue, expense and revenue will marry up almost to the penny, I mean, not to the penny, but you know what I'm saying, they're, they're gonna be right there, expense and revenue. If we continue to utilize, say, a consumption rate, even at ninety-six percent, which would be on the high side because it came in around ninety-four historically. But even if we use ninety-six, that would still create two and a half million dollars round numbers of cushion in that, that budget analysis, analysis. So rather than utilize the consumption rate and then we just don't need to, we don't have to, we're not going to for twenty-four. Basically in my head, what I'm saying is that taking that consumption rate out, which creates about two and a half million dollars in flexibility, then the appropriate from unappropriated throughout the course of twenty-four will just be off of the two point five. You see what I'm saying? This is a different way of basically doing the same math, but um, the budget looks really just fine, as you well know. Any questions on that? I don't know. Yeah, it's fine. Um, just another topic, if I could.
I'm pretty flying it today, buddy, this game, you know, this is.
Got it.
Well, no, I just wanna touch on, so I, I had an opportunity to have a nice meeting with uh John Coches this morning. And um, John and I looked at some uh very, very preliminary data. Uh, but the solar array at the one stop is operational. And John wants you to share with all what, what you're seeing on that.
Sure, yeah, it's been online since uh Friday evening. Uh, Saturday and Sunday were probably the best days kind of seeing that sea work, which is amazing to, to, to see. Uh, we are eating about thirty-nine to forty kilowatt per hour, but at a rated for fifty system, which in this time of year is really a good number with suns lower. Um, so I hope to see really big numbers when we get back in the spring and summer, the, the generation opportunities. It's a goal to build it, that's all. Um, we are all online, we are ready to go and just happy that this project has been accomplished. Excited to see the opportunities and what can break for the future.
So on that front, I met with South Central Power again last week. And I also met with Buckeye Power um last week, same meeting. And basically, for today's rates, and these rates are subject to change, oh, literally any day without notice. But when we produce energy in excess of consumption, so if you look at like a Saturday or a Sunday when the office is not used, we expect to be paid seven point six cents per kilowatt hour for the power that we send to the grid. Then if you look at a Friday at noon on a sunny day, let's say, and we're consuming the energy that we're producing, that has a value of, say, twelve point five cents per kilowatt hour. So if you produce it and you consume it, you're achieving full value. If you produce in excess and you send it to the grid, then your value drops down to seven point six percent. And the reason for that twelve point five to seven point six cent differential is because of the billing changes that South Central deployed to alleviate net metering and shift to net billing. If all of that were AEP connected right now, for example, it would all be at twelve and a half cents. So the, the math really changes depending upon which utility cooperative that you're dealing with. Um, but as John and I went over a number of different issues this morning, the play is as it was from the beginning, and that is to monitor that site, understand the data that we will accumulate throughout the course of 2024. And then understand what the ROI would be for that site and, and possibly other sites if the math works. Right now, the ROI is probably gonna hover on estimate around three and a half percent, not ideal, not the five that should be our baseline. Um, but if the price of electricity goes up, then the ROI goes up. And we just won't know that until we know that. So are there any questions on that? Anything on legal?
Nothing.
Administration update?
I have to share today. Um, the NACO Leadership Academy that um we make available to county employees. We had a bumper crop of graduates from the recent uh twelve-week online program. Um, Fairfield County employees across the nation, made up almost the majority of this, this particular graduating class. We had Adam Sidlacko from the Workforce Center there, Allison Woodside with DD, uh Casey Stanton, I'm sorry, Casey Burke for uh JFS, as well as Emily Jones at JFS, Jennifer Atkinson at DD, Miranda Gray with Adam H., Mitzi Nicewonger with DD, Sarah Timmies with DD, and Tiffany Booze as well with DD, and then Tyler Fisher, who's an attorney uh with Child Support at JFS. So appreciate them taking uh the time and also appreciation to the commissioners for being able to fund that. And we have continued that into twenty-four and have a little over thirty um individuals from the county registered to participate. Healthy Aging Grants, so as you recall, Fairfield County um is set to receive over three hundred and fifty thousand in healthy aging grants from the state. And Job and Family Services um is coordinating that application process, specifically Heather O'Keefe. And she's going to be sending out information through council to share that with um interested providers, as well as Meals on Wheels and the Center for Independence, because they have previously expressed interest in accessing those funds. Heather, what would you like to add to that?
Uh, not too much, I think you captured most of it. We do have a nice simplified application for the Board of Commissioners to utilize. That will contain your scoring matrix, half of which is subjective, so folks will submit letter of interest, just kind of laying out their plan for what they intend to do with the funding. Um, we did give them some prioritization if they, uh, some of their requirements are that we expend at least fifty percent of the funds by March thirty, twenty-four, as well as um targeted three areas of food assistance, housing assistance, or internet access and digital literacy. So we gave folks um the application, will announce additional points for prioritizing those areas. And um, I think from some of the conversations Administrator Portal has had with uh some of the intended applicants, they intend to focus on those areas, so that will make your job uh working these funds quite simple.
There is a very much a timeliness component to getting these funds out to folks. And um, I recently had a conversation with Anna Tobin uh with Meals on Wheels. And one of the more trickier areas of this grant funding is uh with internet connectivity and socialization aspects that way. And they do have a great idea that um, I'm sure that they will present to us for funding on that. Thank you, Heather, and Cory and the rest of the JFS team that are helping to get that um, that out. And um, Tiffany, is that something that you could send out near Friday? Um, information sharing?
Absolutely, you want me to link it Friday?
Perfect, thank you. Uh, we will be having our annual holiday uh get-together for county employees. Um, the Commissioners and County Administration hosts this on December twelfth from eleven to one here on the third floor of the historic courthouse. An invitation will be going out here uh very soon on that. Uh, keeping in that holiday uh spirit, Job and Family Services Holiday Donation Drive has kicked off. The County Administration team has adopted a fourteen-year-old young man, as well as a one-year-old little girl. Um, do have signup sheets here if anybody else would wanna join us in donating uh to those particular um kids. If you wanna do something separate, individuals or groups um can donate um monetary donations, just gifts in general. We also have a giving tree down front where you can just take off a, a tag there and purchase a gift. Um, that would be very helpful. And we also are making sure our elderly adults are being taken care of during this time. So gifts for them are very much appreciated, and the deadline is December thirteenth. Cory, anything you would add?
I think you nailed it.
Okay, alright. Engineer viewings, those are scheduled for next Tuesday afternoon from one to four forty. Um, and so you're gonna have a full day with that. Um, Jeremiah, you wanna add anything on the viewings?
Um, next Tuesday, that's the second day of deer season, so you're probably out there with Bill or Eric or Jeff. And where will you be? Making sure nobody's trespassing on my property.
He's not kidding.
Um, and with that, so that day, Tuesday, will conclude with your last evening meeting of the year, which will be at the Burn Township Fire Department at seven PM. And we will also hold that public hearing for the viewings that you had previous in the day, as well as a number of Adam H. interviews for board vacancies that exist there. Um, Marcy is unable to join us for that, but we have been in conversation with her about these potential candidates. And she will be having a board member, potential staff attend. Uh, lastly, on the update here, National Adoption Day took place this past Saturday. Um, and so that's a collaboration between Job and Family Services and Juvenile Court Magistrate Sitzman, Judge Vanderbord, and all of our um folks there at Job and Family Services, and Attorney James Lenahan, who always lends his services uh for that. So we had uh two little girls find their forever families. And uh, it was one of the things that I really enjoyed doing as JFS Director, and I know Cory does too. And, and Heather, I don't know if you were able to be there as well, but it's always a special day in November. Anything else you would add?
I would just totally agree. It was uh, it is one of the days uh that I look forward to all year. And yeah, to watch those two uh adoptions on Saturday, it's uh, it's without exception, the staff that are there doing that will always say, this is why we do what we do. And that's, you know, you hear that a lot in, in different um circles and things like that. But boy, it's uh, it's never any more uh than it is for that, for that experience. So yeah, it was, it was awesome.
Thank you. Uh, I think I was trying to pull up some pictures, but I'll keep moving here. Highlights of resolutions review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals. We have thirty-two resolutions on the agenda for the voting meeting today. Couple of note here, there is a resolution authorizing AEP, the use of a public easement uh from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to bore around Whetstone Island to the Corey Gregory Island property. Others have already approved that process, we're kind of doing our piece here. David's um shaking his head a little bit, you wanna add anything to that?
I don't know, it's been a long haul to get to this point.
Okay.
Thanks to Engineers Office for.
And I think Prosecutor's Office has uh been helpful in this process as well, if I'm correct. Oh, here we have um, uh, one of the families there, and that's Magistrate Sitzman in the middle. I think he was the one actually conducting the, the adoptions, is that correct?
It's Chelsea, she's uh, able in that gavel well.
That is a big gavel.
Yes. Let's load it on that thing. There's a little concern that they're maybe been cracking.
Do we have any more, Bennett?
We do.
And Sasha with her mom.
Oh.
Seventeen.
Seventeen and fourteen, correct?
I think um, I think Chelsea's eleven.
Oh, eleven, sorry, yeah, sorry, I was thinking of the, the young man we adopted, yeah. Great pictures there, things about it. Uh, we also have a resolution authorizing the repayment of an advance from the Brown Field Remediation Grant Fund to the General Fund. A resolution dis-designating Park National Bank as the depository for Fairfield County's public funds. This is with the Commissioners, County Treasurer, and Park National. And I did see uh Jim up there, Jim, do you wanna add anything to that?
We give him permission to speak real quick.
And it holds all the power.
I do.
Alright, now you can talk, Jim.
He's there?
Maybe not. Michael, you wanna add anything? We'll give you permission to. Okay, we'll keep moving then. Uh, we also have a resolution to appropriate funds to pay Licking County for the lateral A ditch. So this has been a learning process about lateral A ditch for the Engineers Office, myself and, and others. But we took a little field trip up to Licking County last week, and I think we're on a, a good path forward. Um, and this would be something that we would be um paying for out of funds that we had previously collected. And next year, we will be doing, having to do assessments based upon whatever information we receive. And also restarting back up these joint conversations between the Engineers Office of Licking and Fairfield. A resolution from the County Auditor providing for startup cash in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four dollars each for two cash change doors. Auditor's requesting approval of the doors and the adoption of the Auditor's Office policy, which is in accordance with Bulletin twenty twenty zero zero six, cash collections from the Ohio Auditor of State. Carrie, anything to add there?
I think there's likely a resolution from the past, maybe from the early nineties that actually did this. But rather than trying to find it, we just thought it would be best to update it, and this is the best way to update it.
Thank you. And then uh Jeremiah has a resolution on to purchase some brine.
Yep.
Anything?
On the year again, unfortunately.
Alright, and then lastly, a resolution to approve the execution of agreement for legal services between the Commissioners, County Prosecutor, and the Park District Board of Park Commissioners. Amy, do you wanna add anything on that?
Just this, our uh, we see this agreement now every two years, so this is just kind of the renewal of our previous agreement. We changed no uh terms and conditions on it, so it's just more performable.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, budget review, are you anything else to add? Okay, Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
The Clerk Creek Township Land Use Plan Meeting is tonight at six PM in Phil, the twenty twenty-three Fairfield County Economic Update is December seventh at eight thirty AM at the Workforce Center. There will be a retirement celebration to honor Mayor David Schaeffler on December twenty-second from two to four in the Lancaster City Hall Conference Room.
Could you add that to my calendar, please?
And mine, and mine.
Okay. And Dave, did you wanna do the economic update for?
Also.
Okay.
Yeah, the, yes, I'm planning to go to that too, December seventh, yeah.
I plan not to.
Hmm. And retirement celebration is also for Palmer.
Yeah, yeah.
Both well deserved.
Alright, the Ohio University BSN Joyce and Hero MD Nursing Program Celebration will be December fifth at five PM in OU Lancaster's RZ Hall. Ohio University is hosting a meet and greet for their twenty-third president, Dr. Lori Stewart Gonzalez, on December first from ten to eleven, eleven AM at the Raymond S. Wilkes Art Gallery at OUL.
Put me down for both of those.
Absolutely, thank you. The following correspondence was received, a letter from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources regarding an industrial minerals mining permit application. A press release from the old office of the County Auditor titled Fairfield County Auditor Celebrates GIS Day. A November fourteenth memo A November 14th memo from Dr. Carrie Brown County Auditor with the following subjects. The Effective Development on Assessed Valuation, Request of the Soil and Water Conservation District, An Update on the New Electronic Process for the Pre-Approval of Legal Descriptions. Municipal Court's October Criminal Traffic Division Fees Collector Report was received. A Letter from South Central Power Company Regarding Internet Services. An Eastern Cotton Tail Solar Project State of Solar Newsletter. An Email from Eastern Cotton Tail Solar Project Regarding Field Work Studies. The Lancaster Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce Chamber Networker Weekly E-Newsletter. A Letter from the Decorative Arts Center of Ohio. The Fairfield County Heritage Quarterly Fall Newsletter. And the November Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities Imagine Newsletter. That is it.
Thank you, Rochelle.
All right. New business. I already touched on the meeting I had with South Central and Buckeye. Commissioner Levesey under new business.
New business?
I'm saying new because I, you know, I misspoke, but now we're just going to roll with it.
So the new business coming up is Thanksgiving and boy, am I thankful that I live in Fairfield County. You know, when we, when we look across even this country, in many cases, all the turmoil that's going on and so on, especially in the large metropolitan areas, you know, boy, I truly am thankful that I live in Fairfield County. And what a great bunch of people we have here, especially that work for Fairfield County. So appreciate you all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fix under new business.
Well, we're continuing our tour tonight in Clear Creek. We'll have, at the end of the night, completed 19 of the 25 meetings. All the one, all the three are just about scheduled. So we're getting into the short rows and appreciate everybody's support on it. And the other thing is that I heard last night that the CCAO Board Screening Committee is recommending me to continue to serve on the board. That usually means at the December meeting that, you know, that slate is always approved. So I look forward to continuing to serve there.
Thank you. Under all business, I did get a note this week from the chairpersons of the Indigent Defense Committee Meetings. They gave us a couple of post dates for our inaugural meeting on that. And I said yes to both dates and we'll, we'll see, you know, how that process unfolds. But.
I might have warned them that they're going to get grumpy, Steve. I'm not sure.
Ah, sweet. Nice. Lots of things you could say about me.
That's things I could say.
I would do my job. But anyway, that's all I have under all business. Commissioner Levesey under all business.
So last week I missed our normal meeting here. I was actually at Eastland Vocational School. We had a state workforce board meeting with the governor and lieutenant governor. And one of the focuses of that meeting had to do with childcare and how it impacts workforce and, and really eye-opening. On average, a, a family that has two children, they need to put in childcare, costs about $9.62 per hour. So you can imagine how that would affect someone's payroll. And on average, between $8,500 and $11,000 annually per child, which is amazing number. So the state understands how this is such a roadblock for many who would like to work. And so they're upping their game on being able to provide more facilities, making incentives for that purpose and then having a public partner, public-private partnership between employers and providing some grant funding to help alleviate some of those costs. In other words, like a 50/50 partnership between the state and an employer to help provide for, for childcare. But I think one of the big factors is the lack of childcare facilities in, in the state. And so that, that's something they really need to work on. But Rick, would you like to add anything to that? I, I think this is a much bigger deal than most people understand.
It really is. And, you know, after the pandemic and you look at the labor force participation rates, it's a bit lower for females because they typically are ones that step up and stay home with the kids. So the more that we can find affordable childcare in this county, the better up we're going to be. I think we've done a great job of tackling, and there's four main issues, training, housing, childcare, transportation, for getting people to work. So I think we're doing a good job of tackling three. The childcare one is one that it's tough to. But you can ask the best model, I think. They have ones where the employer pays a third, the state pays a third, and the user pays a third. And that's been very effective. Be great to see something like that in Ohio, but locally, you know, we'll, we'll. While we're not looking to take the lead in anything, I don't think, before we support anybody trying to.
And I have one additional thing I'd like to mention, you know, I was actually with the governor, lieutenant governor, when the news came in about that tragic bus accident on Route 70. I actually handed the governor my phone as it came up. And then, of course, the State Patrol brought the inside information regarding that. But, you know, I really truly feel sorry for those folks in, in that one tragic accident last Tuesday.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go back to old business for a moment. Over the last couple of weeks, I heard a couple of rumors about me, which neither of which were true. One that I wouldn't be running or competing in 2024. I do intend to compete in 2024 for this office. The other rumor I heard is that I'm not healthy. That's false. I have arthritis. I had arthritis 13 years ago when I became a commissioner and I still do. But I have no other health issues. So I don't, I don't know why people say these things, but probably just politics. We're thrilled to have with us today County Recorder Lisa McKenzie. How are you today?
Very well, thank you.
Good. Anything you'd like to share?
I missed last Tuesday's meeting. I was at the Ohio Recorders Association Annual Winter Conference. We had a lot of great discussions about some of the legislation going on regarding getting our records online and getting it back to 1980. And they're finding it to be quite a challenge for many counties who are not in such financial status as we are or didn't maybe appropriately request funds at the appropriate times when monies were available. So the state is now working to try and help assist those. So we feel really good about that. But with that happening, that is allowing us more time than we much need to make sure that as we go through these images, that we're making sure that we're getting accurate information online. Just having, some of the counties just had them scanned and they threw them out there and they missed redactions. They missed the documents are, you know, maybe overlapped each other or one was missing altogether. So we're taking the time to make sure that we have the most accurate information out there, available to our constituents. And then the other thing that we talked about, which was very exciting for me to say, Fairfield County, they all were complaining about their commissioners. And I said, we have a great relationship. All of, all of our elected officials have a great relationship with our commissioners because they're willing to take the time to talk with us, to listen and to help collaborate, to make sure that we are doing the best that we can for, for everybody that is out there in our communities. So I just wanted to let you guys know that I was really happy to be able to do it on Fairfield County and how we all work together.
Appreciate you being with us. I think one of my favorite stories, it's a little dated now, but there was some commission somewhere where one of the commissioners couldn't talk to another commissioner because they were mad at each other. And so they would always like speak to the third commissioner and then have the third commissioner repeat that to the other commissioner because three of them couldn't get along or something like that. And we haven't had that problem here for 13 years.
I think there's a couple of counties out there too that are kind of like the Hatfields and Toys. So, you know, the, the, the elected officials are on one side and the commissions on the other. And they just, they, they can't seem to come to terms with anything. So we're very, very fortunate here to have those opportunities.
I appreciate you mentioning that. We do have some fun with that. I do want to deferently acknowledge that in the history of Fairfield County, we have had our share of problems.
I've been here 20 years and yes.
But they're, they're not here today. So thank you. Sir, how you doing?
I'm doing good.
I don't think you're going to be guarding your property. I think you're going to be feeding deer.
Well, we'll see how. Might be a little, little bit. Well, actually, the first thing I want to do is, is echo what Lisa said. And I know I've relayed this before, but I'm on the Board of Directors for the County Engineers Association, have been for several years. And she probably couldn't have said it much better. I hear the same thing. So, you know, I really appreciate the fact that I don't have to go through that to do my job and do my best to make sure you guys don't have to do your job. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you too, Jeremiah. And I know you're one of many who are on the, the traveling crew right now, so to speak. And I know that's extra work for you and, and there's probably some stress involved here and there with that. But we all appreciate what you're doing and, and your service to the community. Thank you.
How did scrimmage turn out last night? How did scrimmage turn out last night?
It was, it was good. It turned out good. It, it wasn't going good when I got there and looked around.
You were the good luck charm.
I don't know about that. The other thing I wanted to say was thanks to Onnie on the, on the lateral A ditch. That thing has been a confusing mess over time. Onnie getting into it and getting ahold of the right people really is what made this thing come together. Got us to the table, got us to get it sorted out and understand what this county's role.
That's, that's really strange because the vast majority that's in Fairfield County.
I, I agree.
It's weird.
So we did, that was part of our education tour because the petition was filed in Licking County way back when. That is why it is the primary on it. Versus today would be the predominant property. That would dictate that.
Thank you. I've always wondered what the reason.
Yes, Ken, former prosecutor in Licking County was at the table and he had a little history for us. And he was also part of Kyle's team here.
Hey, Jeremiah. Dr. Brown. How are you today?
Just fine. Last week was the County Auditors Conference and similar conversation about collaboration and sometimes lack of collaboration that's had. Very fortunate in Fairfield County to have a great deal of collaboration and continued communications. And as you listen to some of the issues and problems are in other counties, most of it can be cleared up with just more communication. So it's a good lesson as well. At the conference, Attorney General Yost announced the effort to settle with Dollar General and provide $750,000 to counties overall throughout the state for food pantries. You'll recall that this lawsuit was based upon Dollar General not having the proper pricing structures and the proper pricing systems. And people were paying more than expected, more than advertised and more than listed for products. And that resulted in this particular settlement. Attorney General Yost was very appreciative of county auditors who provided the data that supported that particular lawsuit and its conduct. And that is the reason that it's providing back two counties settlement for food pantries. So Burn was to provide two, you could only select two food pantries as quickly as possible so that that money can be provided during the holidays. So yesterday, when we got the questionnaire filled out completely and immediately for Lancaster Fairfield Community Action Food Pantry and the Pickerington Food Pantry, two most populous, as well as two that use the Mid-Ohio Food Bank. And this money can be matched by up to $4.89 cents for each dollar. So your next question is typically, well, how much will it be? So we don't know the formula exactly, but we know that it's based upon the number of Dollar Generals that are within the county. And we had 12 at the time of the lawsuit. We have 13 now. So we can estimate it's a few thousand dollars for each. Matched it becomes significant. Had a presentation with the Reynoldsburg Rotary and there were a group of Realtors who asked for that particular presentation and it went very well. They were very engaged. Next year, I'm going to ask the Franklin County Auditor to come along and I think they'll be very appreciative of that. Say brava to Nick with GIS because he did such a good job with GIS Day. And the new tools are going to be used and some educational materials for Lancaster STEM classes. Finance is working on a new module and Adam H. D.D. and Health Department are going to be implementing that module based upon grant reporting. It'll be helpful for those who even don't have grants because the way that the module will allow for some customized reports. And we also have learned about how there is a new way that townships and corporations can have access to their information. And that's a vendor self-service information. Look for that more in '24. In the memo from this week, I did put the information about the assessed valuation and the effective development on that particular valuation. Hopefully that's helpful. And then finally, in payroll, post-pandemic, there's a requirement for employers to withhold based upon where you work. Where one works can be changed based upon a normal schedule of teleworking. Perhaps maybe someone might work four days in Lancaster at the home office and one day where they live in Columbus. We now are required to withhold municipal income taxes based upon that structure. That's something that will have compliance within '24. It's partial compliance now, but it'll be more fully in compliance post-pandemic in '24. We're working with payroll officers to make sure they know those procedures. From that though, our process is restricted in terms of doing anything on a voluntary basis. So the field and the space that we're using, the system for the mandatory process, takes away our ability to do any voluntary withholdings. There are about 20% of employees who have a voluntary withholding to another municipality. And we're reaching out to those individuals to let them know that we won't be able to do that in '24. And then they will be able to settle up as they do now with that municipal entity on that voluntary basis. So we're reaching out to those individuals one-on-one, then we'll reach out to department heads as well, rather than doing global because it could get confusing as people try to understand there's two different aspects. And we thought that increased communication could be helpful in understanding that change for '24.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you for being with us today.
Just have one final positive thing. If you see Bev Hoskins, since she welcomed her first grandchild, baby Oliver, last Friday. Mom and baby are doing quite well.
It's certainly something to celebrate.
It sure is.
I'm trying to get the chance to celebrate something like that personally.
Yeah, who knows?
It's new news here. Kyle, you just joined us. How are you today?
I'm doing well.
Good. As you may know, when folks have an opportunity to visit with us, other electeds, we certainly give them an opportunity to say hello and share any information that you might like the folks in attendance to hear from your office. Anything you'd like to share today?
I appreciate the opportunity. Things are, you know, we're prosecuting cases and doing our civil duties. We are here the first week of the summer, myself and Detective Meadows from the Sheriff's Office. We'll be traveling to the Pickerington Local School District to make a presentation on cyber safety to kind of like a community forum. So that's something a little, not terribly different. We've done it in other districts as well, but we're taking that on the road. We can do that presentation. Looking forward to that. So otherwise, business as usual. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for being with us today. Tony, how are you doing today? Good. Anything you'd like to share or update the Commissioner?
He's announced that. We know, yeah. Maybe headway. I get a lot of people that are backing back out to me about water and the sewer services.
If I could just, you know, my appreciation for Tony continues to grow as uh, we go out to these meetings and, and he's able to talk the talk with, you know, usually someone involved in their utility department and uh, it is making an impact. So I really appreciate you and Josh both going to most of those meetings.
And, and I appreciate Commissioner Fix and everybody that's involved going that because that's a lot of extra work. I, I totally appreciate.
Rick, anything briefly?
I'll talk to you.
Appreciate you being with us today. John, anything additional?
No, Rick's talked enough.
I like it. Ian?
Our project to deploy uh, multi-factor authentication throughout the county um, in terms of both center access and county systems uh, is essentially hundred percent uh, in operation. Uh, we just have cleanup lots of bypass uh, situations right now, but uh, thanks to any and everyone that was involved in that and uh, you know, kind of like what Lisa was saying. Uh, the, the partnership of that work. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. Or anything?
Uh, I think we covered ours with the holiday donation drive and the National Adoption Day. So.
I always skip Jeff Porter, but I'm not skipping him today. Anything you'd like to share?
Um, just happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Um, enjoy the food, all of that. Uh, but when you get back, we're gonna begin our next wellness challenge with first falls. So we can teach you how to be going into Thanksgiving or Christmas.
I am, I am glad I didn't skip you today. So, all right. So any other issue item that anybody'd like to bring the attention to the commission at this time? Hearing none, please rise if you are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, a country, united in a soul with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shell, do we have any announcements?
I do have two announcements. In your binders, you will find the schedule for the engineer viewings for November twenty eighth. I just wanted to point out that they were there. They show the time and location for each of the eight viewings. Also, I wanted to um, state that the Fairfield County offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday, November twenty-third and twenty-fourth in observance of Thanksgiving.
I'll look forward to that holiday and thank you for those announcements. We'll move on to the approval minutes for Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes past three zero. From the commissioners, we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot A. Resolution authorizing the use of public easement by American Electric Power.
The commissioners, I move items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Second. Discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Auditor Finance Division, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot H. Cash change drawer for county auditor.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
This resolution just formalizes the process for making change.
Further discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Auditor Real Estate Division. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot I, a resolution authorizing a memo expense memo receipt for reimbursement of agency share of Arc GIS online license fees for Fund Twenty Twenty Two REA Department.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Please properly expenses the licensing fees for GIS.
Further discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Board of Elections, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot J. A resolution to authorize funding made available to Fairfield County Board of Election for cost incurred in conducting the August eighth, twenty twenty-three special election additional reimbursement as appropriated by AM Sub-House Phil thirty-three of the one hundred thirty-fifth General Assembly and appropriate from unappropriated.
Your Fairfield County Board of Elections, I move items J and K.
Second. Discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Domestic Relations Court. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot L, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for Fund Twenty Eight Forty-eight.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot M. A resolution authorizing a fund-to-fund transfer from EMA Fund Twenty Ninety to Twenty Seven Oh Seven.
Under Fairfield County EMA, I move items M and N.
Second. Discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Engineer, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot O. A resolution to approve an agreement for the purchase of brine.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move items O, P, Q, and R.
Second. Discussion?
The other two expenditures are salt and grits. Um, so a little bit of good news, we didn't have to buy our full load of salt. Stated enough last year, we had to buy thirty-five hundred tons instead of sixty-five hundred. So the plan is with that little bit of savings, to keep that aside for when we build a new salt bar in a case of cap overages, whatnot. And if we don't need it for that, it'll go to a project.
Yeah, I, I don't know why. It's just the word grits is sticking with me there because I've heard of the brine and I've heard of the salt, but I'm feeling like something new's coming up here. What's grits?
Shrimpy grits. It's gravy. So in the salt, we mix uh, we cook grits or, or a small stone. We mix that into salt for traction.
Okay.
Um, you know, we got, especially in the southern part of the county here, we have a lot of hills and whatnot. And it makes a big difference when we get ice for the school buses. If they get on an intersection, it's bad or something like that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't realize, I don't recall having heard that phraseology before, but I'm good. I understand now.
And, and uh, the, the engineers able to cut down on the amount of salt, uh, they're putting down as well.
True, it does.
I, I have to say, sometimes uh, the state of Ohio's salt application exceeds a snowfall. And uh, you, it, it's a platoon and.
It is. We have to report the amount of salt we put down to the EPA every year.
Further discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From the Fairfield County Job and Family Services, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot S. Resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated into a major expense object category, Fund Twenty Seventy Two.
Under Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items S and T.
Second. Discussion? Nothing on these resolutions, but just a programming note for folks. Uh, you might have noticed I whispered a little bit with Ani there during the meeting. I was asking her to develop the invitation list for an executive session that we need to have here shortly. It was supposed to occur at ten o'clock. We're running just a couple of minutes behind schedule. We apologize for any inconvenience that may cause. Further discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot U. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer into a major expenditure object category, Fund One Zero Zero One, General Fund Juvenile Court.
Under Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items U, V, W, X, and Y.
Second. Discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Prosecutor, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot Z. A resolution to approve the execution of an agreement for legal services between the Fairfield County Board of County Commissioners jointly with the Fairfield County Prosecuting Attorney and the Fairfield County Park District Board of Park Commissioners.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Sheriff, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot AA. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer, Fund One Zero Zero One.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Soil and Water Conservation District, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot VB. A resolution approving an account-to-account transfer.
So moved. Second. Discussion?
Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From Fairfield County Utilities Department, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot CC. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated into a major expenditure object category for Utilities Five Zero Four Six.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Thank you. Further discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. From South Central Major Crimes Unit, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot DD. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in Recovery Ohio Grant Fund, seven eight seven eight six four two four, sub fund eight three three six. Request for an advance.
Under South Central Major Crimes Unit, I move items DD and EE.
Second. Discussion?
For this particular resolution, this is an advance for major crimes and um, we are spelling out specifically the repayment um, of the agreement is due by December fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. For them to be repaying it, they do receive reimbursements all along.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. Payment of bills, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven dot twenty-one dot FF. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Please call to roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at the Burnt Township Fire Department, fifty-eight seventy-two Sugar Grove Road at seven P. M.
Is there any other issue item that anybody'd like to bring the attention to the commission at this time? Schedule for the commission is we anticipate going into executive session. Uh, following that executive session, there is not currently anticipated any further business that would be conducted by the commission, although we reserve the right to do so. That being understood. Any other issue item? I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending a threatened litigation. In that session, I'd like to have the commissioners, prosecutor's office, administration, uh, uh, administrators portal and porter. The clerks, representatives from the sheriff's office, uh, Chief Irvin's, Chief Collins, and of course outside counsel who's joined us here shortly. Did I miss anybody on that?
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Please call to roll.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.